It's six o'clock. I'm calling the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of March 16, 2023 to order. Can we begin with roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Hector Garcia, present. Rolando Cazares, Mike Barone, Manolo Angel, present. Johnny Arvise, present. Yuxin Wang, here. Regina Portillo, present. Daniela Salpas and Ana Villarreal, present. For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have four.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to excuse those that aren't present?
I'll make a motion to excuse the members.
Click and... All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to all who stand in this house. Reunification of your God, individual, liberty, justice, and freedom.
We'll now move on to consider the approval of minutes of March 2, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any citizen comments?
No, sir. We do none.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Amendment of an ordinance going to Section 6A, amending the zoning ordinance map of Ciudad Laredo by rezoning approximately 25.39 acres, situated in Porción 14, Abstract 56, Jose Oaxado, original grantee, within the city limits of Laredo in Webb County, Texas, out in part of the ND HR Ranch, recorded in Volume 303, Page 164, Webb County deeds and records located south of Beltway Parkway and west of Interstate 35 from AG Agriculture to M1 Light Manufacturing District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant ND HR Trust owner, where the court applicant, Boris Nans, engineering is representative. Property description, approximately 25.039 acres, located south of Beltway Parkway and west of Interstate 35. His zoning request is from an AG to an M1, proposed use by industrial. Letter sent three, four, zero, against, zero. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff support or proposed zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone want to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Wayne Nance with Boris Engineering. We concur with staff support for this item, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nance. This is a public hearing. Anyone wants to speak in favor of this item? Anyone want to speak against this item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission? There's no other questions?
I move to close public comments and move to support staff recommendation.
We second that.
You have a second from Commissioner Garcia? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 6B, amend the zoning ordinance map of Ciudad Laredo by rezoning lots 1, 2, and 3, block 1149 Eastern Division, located 2001 Guadalupe Street, from B3 Community Business District to B4 Highway Commercial District.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is asked to withdraw this item.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion against? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 6C, amend the zoning ordinance map of Ciudad Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on Lot 2, Block 9, Crown Ridge Subdivision Phase 1, located at 414 Shiloh Drive, Unit 7.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Maria E. Sanchez as the owner. We have property location, Lot 2, Block 9, Crown Ridge Subdivision Phase 1, located at 414 Shiloh Drive, Unit 7, and it's 1,071 square feet. Zone change, it's a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. Proposed use is for a restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent, 44. Inside the 200 feet, we have four in support. Outside 200 feet, we have nine in support. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning view. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff does not support. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak in favor of this item?
Can I speak in Spanish? She's my third language.
Yes, and you can state your name for the record, please.
Buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por su tiempo. Hicimos la petición para vender lo que es...
Su nombre para chicos? Su nombre?
Su nombre.
Yatira Veláez.
Gracias.
Hicimos la petición para vender con las comidas cerveza. Se nos negó el permiso porque nos dicen, como ustedes vieron, nos dicen que el estacionamiento debe de ser para 100 autos. Yo le comentaba a mis... Y que esa plaza en su momento la ciudad autorizó nada más por 64 autos. Entonces no tenemos donde... ¿Cómo crecer en el estacionamiento? Nuestro restaurante es servicio familiar o ambiente familiar. Lo único que queremos es ofrecerle a los clientes sus tacos con una cerveza. Somos latinos, somos locales. Queremos generar más ingresos, más empleos, y varios de nuestros clientes han dejado de ir por esta situación. Nuestro vecino, a dos locales, Taco Ravi, que tiene años aquí en el negocio, ellos sí tienen permiso de alcohol. Anexé... No sé si se alcance a ver, pero anexé un tipo plano donde... Este... Anexé un tipo plano donde nuestra plaza pues ya se vende alcohol, como es Taco Ravi. Este a cuadra y media está Taquería Arandas, que ellos tienen también venta de alcohol, cervezas, margaritas. Y Planning Zone no me dejará mentir, ellos no llegan así en estacionamientos tampoco. Mario Lico, que es una de las vinaterías más urtidas de la ciudad, ellos pues ya cuentan con el permiso. Está a cuadra y media de nosotros. A media cuadra rumbo al 35 se encuentra Mariscos el Pescador. Ellos tampoco llegan así en estacionamientos y tienen la licencia del alcohol. Nosotros lo único que queremos es vender el platillo con una cerveza, no más. Y me gustaría que, por favor, pusieran en consideración nuestra propuesta y que el motivo de estar aquí es para tener más negocio y generar más empleo. Contrataríamos más personal y pues cumpliríamos con todas las... No recuerdo si 20 restricciones o 20 puntos que nos pide Planning Zone.
Gracias.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Quería preguntarle, usted va a cambiar las horas que están abiertos si aprobamos este cambio?
Eh... No, seguíamos trabajando igual de nueve a once. Cabe mencionar... Permítanme hacer un paréntesis sobre el estacionamiento que se nos requiere. Los únicos restaurantes que estamos abiertos ahí después de las cinco, seis de la tarde, que es cuando más familias van a cenar con nosotros. Este... Todo el estacionamiento prácticamente es de Ravi y de nosotros, porque al lado hay unas oficinas, seis oficinas, y nada más trabajamos hasta las cinco. Al otro lado están, este, unas terapias, y ellos nada más están hasta las cinco, igual es gimnasio. Entonces, por favor, me gustaría que lo reconsideren, mis Portillo y todo el staff.
Gracias.
Y yo tengo dos preguntas. La primera es si revisó las condiciones del permiso especial?
Eh... Sí, cuando hablamos a Austin, este, nos dieron todo el itinerario y aquí mencionan, no sé si a eso se refiere, de los 310.
Eh... No, me refiero a las condiciones que está sugiriendo el Departamento de Planificación.
Eh... Sí, lo que... Las condiciones que nos pone es donde dice que la plaza comercial son 100 estacionamientos y que el restaurante propone, requiere de 13 estacionamientos más 87 de la plaza. ¿Eso se refiere, mis Villarreal?
Eh... Bueno, aquí nosotros tenemos una lista de 18...
Ah, sí.
Condiciones, que dice que no pueden tener música y...
Sí, 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 perdón. Bueno, no me especifiqué, pero lo que les comenté es que las 18 estas condiciones, todas estamos en... Todas las podemos cumplir.
Okay. Y mi segunda pregunta es, ¿no habrá posibilidad de que tenga con algún contrato o algún acuerdo con una plaza que está al lado? Porque veo que también tienen muchos estacionamientos y...
Sí, podemos hablar los... La misma administradora, la misma Arrowway, Sandra Salinas, y podemos hablar con ellos, ¿verdad? Somos vecinos.
Sería una forma en que puede resolver el tener estacionamientos adicionales para su negocio y que se permitan.
Ah, sí, mis Villarreal. Nada más ahí este... Lo que... Eso lo podríamos hacer. Nos sentimos como en desventaja que nuestros vecinos no cuentan con esa... Con esos estacionamientos y a nosotros sí se nos estaría exigiendo. Pero más, sin embargo, lo podemos hablar con Sandra Salinas.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, her restaurant's currently open, okay? She's been in business, and we understand the parking situation. We basically try to stay consistent with our ordinances and let you know what should be... What they should do to stay compliant or to be in compliance. But she's open, and that's fine. What... We were told that next door to this restaurant, there's a church. I don't know.
Enseguida, en la mera esquina, es una iglesia. Sí, sí, ellos operan... Si mal no recuerdo, hasta las cinco de la tarde. Sí, para hacer historia, los dueños que construyeron esa plaza, Mr. Ramos, ellos son casi dueños de ocho puertas, entonces ellos se lo rendan a la iglesia. Como le comentaba a Mr. Navarro, nuestro restaurante es 100% ambiente familiar. No estamos pidiendo un permiso para gambling, no estamos pidiendo un permiso para bar, y pues mucho menos como un tipo exotico, la verdad. Es simplemente una lata de cerveza con unos tacos.
And I know the restaurant very well. It's a good restaurant. We don't really have a problem with that. It's basically a recommendation by you all to determine because I... You know, the church being there in a strip center kind of throws things off, and maybe our ordinance is antiquated. We have to kind of reconsider the ordinance because I believe the ordinance was for standalone churches, but now we're getting churches that are not getting into strip malls and stuff like that, and I don't think we've really adjusted our ordinance lately on that particular note. So this is one of those cases where, you know, even if we just said, okay, the parking's fine, she's open, she's doing her business, but we have a church next door, so now what do we do? So...
But the church just got in there, or it was...
¿Cuánto tiempo tiene allí esa iglesia?
Because I know Taco Ravi has been there for a lot...
They were there before the church.
Before the church, you know? So why is Taco Ravi going to be able to sell...
I think your point is 44 letters are sent down, and we have 13 in favor and zero against.
13 coming to play.
Well, if I think the church had a problem, they would be here to say something.
Exactly.
And I think also just considering this restaurant in particular, it's a very small restaurant, very family oriented. There will be no music outside of it. And I think that just in support of small business development, I don't see why we would, you know, already allow neighboring restaurants to serve alcohol in this restaurant, so I am in favor of it.
Thank you. So, yes.
Thank you for the time.
So this is a public hearing. Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this item? How about against the item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close and approve the permit.
Okay.
My second.
So we have a person... All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
To... Can you go against staff?
Go against staff and to recommend approval of...
Subjective condition.
Right.
Okay, so we have clarification of the motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Item 6B. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Ciudad Laredo by rezoning approximately 1.82 acres out of the called... A called 20.12 acres designated as Track 2, conveyed to Martinez Land Development Limited Liability Company, recorded in Volume 5042, Pages 272 to 277, Webb County Official Public Records. Situated in Porción 31, Jose Trevino, original grantee. Abstract 3116, Webb County, Texas, located north State Highway 359 and west of Delphina Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential District to B4 Highway Commercial District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have the applicant, Martinez Land Development owner. We have George Martinez as the applicant. We have Ricardo Villarreal as the representative. Property location, approximately 1.82 acres, located north of State Highway 359 and west of Delphina Avenue. We have zone change from R1 to B4. Proposed use is commercial, and the applicant did not identify the specific proposed commercial use. Letter sent were seven, and we have none for and none against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of this item?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, Manuel Escamilla with Top Site, representing the applicant. This item and the next item are changes that we are requesting due to a change in the master plan, and we don't have a specific use in mind yet because we're still very early on the planning side, but getting everything papered up, as you would say. So if you have any questions, I'm here. That's the reason for these two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody who would speak in favor? Like to speak against this item? If there's not any question... Is there any questions from the commission?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to see where this and the next one, where we're requesting from R1A to B4, where they sit next to each other.
Would you like to...
So the R1 to B4 is because of a change in our buffer for the future commercial. So we're entitlementing the land with the B4 early in the process as we master plan. So there was a change in the master plan, so we slid some of the commercial and the residential across the line. So we're swapping it back to match the current master plan.
And then the R1A would be the...
Yeah, that's further... The R1A on the next one...
Above and left to where you currently are, right? I just want to see like where it may go.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to open up that item so that he could talk about both?
Sure, we can go ahead and do that. Let's go ahead and open up Item 6E. Do you want to read that one out as well? So we're going to open up Item 6E to, I guess, hear together, which is a main zoning ordinance map of Ciudad Laredo by rezoning approximately 1.82 acres out of the called 48.794 acres designated as Track 1, recorded in Volume 5042, Pages 272 to 277, Webb County Official Public Records, and partially out of a called 25 acres conveyed to Martinez Land Development Limited Liability Company, recorded in Volume 5100, Pages 867 to 870, Webb County Official Public Records, situated in Porción 31, Jose Trevino, original grantee. Abstract 3116, Webb County, Texas, located north of 359 and west of Delphina Avenue from B4 Highway Commercial District to R18, Single Family Reduced Area.
Go ahead, Manuel.
So this is the conveyed or the swap on the... From the B4? Or is this two of the B4? Is this D or E up there?
He's going to get to the next one very...
Okay. See, so initially, the line on the north side, north would be up in this picture, the line was the edge of where the housing and the commercial swapped. That line has been moved further south, and so that little wedge piece is what we're going to convert to housing.
Okay, and it's moving that the commercial to...
Right, further east.
Okay.
He's just straightening out lines so it can be a little bit nicer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, let's go ahead and make a motion for Item 6D first.
Motion to approve.
Second, by anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I hear... Is that I'm majority?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Second... Can I have... Against? Motion carries. Do we read out 6B?
You just go ahead and go to motion. We already read until it...
Okay, so can I have a motion for Item 6E?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 6F. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Ciudad Laredo by rezoning approximately 1.56 acre tract of land situated in Porción 38, Abstract 472. Tadeo Sanchez, original grantee, Porción 21, Abstract 49, Leonardo Garcia, original grantee, Ciudad Laredo, Webb County, Texas, being out of 355.725 acre tract owned by Celito Lindo, Limited as recorded in Volume 650, Pages 703 to 706 of the Webb County Deed Records, Texas, located south of Celito Lindo Boulevard and west of Cuatro Vientos Road from R1A Single Family Residential Reduced District to B3 Community Business District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have the applicant, Celito Lindo owner. We have Holland Engineering as applicant and representative. Property location, approximately 1.56 acres, located south of Celito Lindo Boulevard and west of Cuatro Vientos Road. We have a zone change from an R1A to B3. Proposed use is commercial. The applicant did not identify the specific proposed commercial use. Letter sent were six. We have none for and none against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this item?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I mean, if you look at it, it looks like the site is shifted down, so it kind of looks awkward, but it shifted down, but that's that there's a right of way there. So they are on the corner. They're not... It just looks awkward in the picture.
It shifted into the last one.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Miguel Jimenez with Holland Engineering representing the applicant, and we concur with staff support. Just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
You still don't know what is going to be built there?
Yeah, most likely it's going to be a gas station.
Okay.
So that's what we're anticipating, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak against this item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close and support the recommendation.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 6G. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Ciudad Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for a plant nursery, retail sales, and outside storage on east half of Lot 3 and west half of Lot 4, Block 122, Western Division, located at 1812 Houston Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have applicant Maria Guerra as the owner. Applicants, we have property location, east one half lot of Lot 3 and west one half of Lot 4, Block 122, Western Division, located at 1812 Houston Street. We have a zone change request from a conditional use permit for a plant nursery. This is for retail sales and outside storage. The proposed use is for a plant nursery for retail sales and outside storage. Letter sent, we have 23. We have inside the 200 feet notice, we have zero for and zero against. Outside 200 feet, we have two in support, and we have zero against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. We have the zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of this item?
Good afternoon. And Ms. Maria Guerra, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for the...
It's a small plant nursery. A backyard proposition.
Thank you. Yes, there is no question from the commission, I think.
All right. Mr. Navarro, I was surprised today that I might be required to have a seven-foot fence. I've got a six-foot fence. Of course, all fences look tall to me, but... South, I think I've got a six-foot fence. East, I believe it's six. It may be a little bit shorter. West of Sepulveda, it's six foot. And then behind me is an old brick wall fence, a clay brick fence, that's probably about five, five-something in height. Is that something that you can look at and surprise me of what?
I think we'll be fine with that, Mr. Chairman. Yes. Hopefully Ivy will grow and all that, and it'll be...
Well, it contains litter, and I mean, it's all... If there's any litter on my property, it stays with me. All right. No other questions? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak in favor? How about against this item? Anyone like to speak against the item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I would like to motion to approve this item with the change on staff suggestion number five. How should we word it, Mr. Navarro?
A variance of a foot or, you know, more.
Is that okay, Ms. Guerra?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
A variance of one foot to the seven feet that's specified?
Yes.
One foot is fine? Okay.
So we're going to do two...
Let's do two feet.
Two feet, okay.
The other one is less.
Okay, then motion to approve subject to amending staff condition number five to change from seven feet to a variance of... Should we just say five feet? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, two, no less than five feet.
Would it be better not to put any feet on it, just recommendation to approve, modify number five to comply with City One?
Right.
That would be better.
Okay, then let's go with that.
That way they can do a five, six, seven.
So do I have a second?
That's a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're now moving on to the review and consideration of the following master plan. Item 7A, review and consideration of the codes at Winfield Master Plan. The attempt is residential, commercial, and institutional.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is charcoal land sales engineers, Miss Key... I'm sorry, I have... Miss Key Engineering, proposed use is residential, commercial, and institutional. The zoning for this one lot development is R1, single-family residential, and the portion is located in the ETJ. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Comments from traffic, safety, parks and leisure, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Rolando Ortiz. I'm with Kilm Development. We're the development arm for charcoal land sales. I'd like to introduce my team. I'd like to introduce my team, Agar Rudolph Morales and Hugo Secta, uh, they're work on the engineering components of our project. And, um, Mr. Chairman, board, thank you all for your service, I really appreciate that, so, um, we have, uh, I guess I'll start with the easy ones, the ones we agree with. So, uh, regarding, we're okay with items two from the planning comments, we're okay with items two, three, four. Item seven, as shown on the notes, it should be six, but there was probably a little typo. Item eight and nine should be addressed in the planning phase of the development, and then we're okay with ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. On the traffic comments, we're also okay with all those comments as well. I'd like to go back to, um, can I get control? I'd like to go back to items one and four. To mine, to my little power. I have it on the desktop.
Rowley, did you say four? Five, okay.
One and five.
Okay, there's, there's the.
So I, I'd like to take you all back to the beginning, because this is now the third time we've submitting this exact same master plan to the city of Vareto, and to three different commissions, so everybody's new, and I understand that, we've got new staff on planning and zoning, but, uh, we've already done some improvements out there, right, for UISD. So back in, um, two thousand and seven, we did a development called Shiloh's Crossing. Just give me a little bit of time, and it'll all kind of fit into place. Shiloh Crossing was a typical development of city standard, twenty-foot, twenty-foot front setbacks, five-foot side setbacks, twenty-foot rear setbacks. When we finished the development, and this, keep in mind, was in two thousand and seven, we finished the development in two thousand and nine, Mr. Killam drove out there and, um, came back into my office and basically said, you know, Rowley, we need to do a little better job of our developments. The homes kinda look like barracks, right, you just have this long row of, of homes, twenty, everything's right at the twenty-foot setback line. So about that time, I received this book, it's called Prefurbia, it was a gentleman by the name of Rick Harrison. He's a, a designer of what they call the coving design, which is what we came up with. He, uh, does work all over the United States. He has a project, a couple of projects in the Rio Grande Valley, he's got several in San Antonio, some in Austin, but he's actually from Minneapolis. So, in two thousand and nine, we submitted our first code master plan, and you can see here, the roads are a little windy and curvy. We had, UISD at the time was going out for a bond election, so they had three school sites out here, then failed, and so, Keith Selman at the time was the planning zoning director, he, uh, he approved this plan, and he actually told us, you confront arterials with this type of design, because we know it's not gonna be a very typical design. He also said you can do bar ditches, which the city doesn't allow us to do because of the codes, but things to that effect, so, uh, so this plan expired. Feel like Monty Python. So in two thousand and fourteen, we come back in, UISD passes their bond election, uh, they're excited to get started, so we have to go back and re-submit our master plan. So we go back, we look at our long-range thoroughfare plan, and the road that we have in question is Champion's Way for today's topic. So, this actually shows the thoroughfare plan as a major collector from Del Mar all the way to Shiloh. So when we developed it, and I'm sorry, but that red line on the bottom, where the highlight is, that's Del Mar, and the red line on top is Shiloh. So, it showed that going all the way, actually past Shiloh as a major collector. And so, in our two thousand and fourteen plan, Nathan Branton was the planning zoning director, so we came in and it took us about twelve months to get this plan approved. Two thousand and seventeen, the comprehensive plan changes. So in two thousand and fourteen, this is the master plan we got approved by the city. And, um, as you can see, it's the same pattern of cove roads, kinda windy. What Nathan, um, asked us to do was to place the lots that are gonna face the collectors, and you can see them there, right? And at, at no time will we ask to actually put lots on phases, on the, all the other phases, because it's a master plan, so when you actually come in and develop a different pot or a different phase, that's when you kinda design the lots. So, you can see here, um, we have some areas that are dark, that those streets won't be fronted, and then the lighter ones are the ones that are fronted that actually show the lots facing the collector. Two thousand and twenty-three, the city's now plan is, and let me go back real quick, and you can see we have this two-mile diameter hiking bike trail that kinda touches all the different, um, school sites, and the idea was to get people to get on the jogging trail or the bike trail, and you can go to a school, or you can exercise at night, or, or, um, to use it to mobility.
Is that the circle?
That's the circle, yeah, I'm sorry, because, um, I'm kinda showing it here, but it's up there, it's the circle, yes, it's the, um, the two-mile diameter, um, linear park really, or circular park, I should say, so, two thousand and twenty-three, we submit our master plan, we show, we're continuing to show Champion's Way, and that's the road. The one that is up off of Del Mar, it comes through there, you see it's still? You can still see where we're showing that this is why, so we're able to front it. We're continuing to keep this area dark, because you don't wanna front homes.
It's over here now.
I was trying to help you, but you messed it up.
Right?
The other way around.
Upside down. There you go.
There you go. So, okay, so Champion's Way, even in this portion here, we wouldn't be fronting it, but we continue going to bring it to this side over here, all the way to Shiloh, and even over in some points over here in Shiloh where the other schools at, we don't plan to front it. And, one of the comments they had on our comment, on, on the master plan was to extend Champion's Way to the Rodriguez track, which is north of us, which we've gone ahead and put in there. And, we've also agreed that from this point to the Rodriguez, we won't front those roads either, it'll be a ninety-foot minor arterial. We also drew in all the lots, and I wish I could tell you that's exactly the way they're gonna be built in five to eight years, but I can't tell you that, so, but, what's important is the legend, is at the maximum density, how many lots can you put in those phases, right? Because, Mr. Garcia needs to know that, so when you're building your water lines and your sewer lines, you're building enough capacity, we wanna know that, because we don't wanna cut ourselves short by the time we get to that side of the world. So, in addition to the single ring, we added another ring, because we're now bringing in all the property that's in our tax increment reinvestment zone. Still has to get annexed, but we went ahead and included it in our master plan, just so everybody can see what's happening and what's gonna be going on, so, that's kind of, um, what we're looking at. So if, if, we're asking for y'all to approve the master plan by removing item one, and if you remove item one, it automatically defaults item number five, which talks about you can't be fronting collectors or arterials, right? So, um, you ask me, well, Rowley, I mean, there's probably some concern with regards to fronting a collector. So, this program or this master plan and the designer contemplates those exact same issues. These fifty lots, which you've already preliminary approved, which we're going through the one-stop shop, shows the driveways to have what we call hammerheads, right? So you're back out of your garage, you kind of reverse into a part, paved area, and then you drive forward. We will have that in our covenants, conditions, and restrictions. We look at every plan that is built here and approve it as a decorum of the subdivision, right? So, as you can see here, you'll have this vehicle back up, and they're driving straight into it. In addition to that, we're not building twenty-foot setbacks. We're not requiring a twenty-foot setback, the smallest setback we're actually requiring in these fifty lots is thirty feet, so you can have that room to do that. But, most of these lots, as you move towards, um, so we went back to that, so, um, it are actually setbacks that are greater than sixty feet. So you've got a long driveway, right? Uh, I have a, I had a house in Del Mar Sea that, my house was up front, and I had a long driveway to the backyard where my carport was, and so, nine times out of ten, I would back up into Chevy Chase, but you could, I, I had enough concrete back there to where I could usually back up and then drive straight through, right? So, and that's the concept of this, and that's how you're able to, to circumvent the, um, limited restriction that the city imposes, right? That it's twenty-foot minimum setback, which is what most people do. In fact, most of these lots are eleven thousand square feet. That's the average, and, um, most of the subdivisions coming in are probably a little smaller than that. So, we're trying to do something a little more robust. Hopefully, Mr. Killam will be happy about it, so I can still have a job, uh, but, um, so, those are the variants that we've discussed with prior boards that have approved, and prior P M Z staff and directors. So, I'll get off my soapbox here, but we're trying to create a more livable environment for our customers, as you can see, we've got these two, what we're calling the Olympic, the two Olympic rings, not all of them, but it, it's, it's something that, you know, people wanna, we want them to feel comfortable in that community. As mentioned earlier, the two Olympic rings will create a very walkable and hikeable subdivision for the residents of the codes. The biggest challenge we have is trying to get this development off the ground, living within the restrictions that the city is imposing, right? And, um, uh, we hope that, uh, you all will see the enhancement of this development, and, and, and we hope that you will approve it subject to those two comments.
It was number one?
If you have any questions, please let me know.
It was comment number one?
And five.
Number five.
And five.
So I know you mentioned the hammerhead design, and you're anticipating for the people who live in the house to do that reverse and then full up front, but what happens if they do not do that?
Well, I mean, you put stop signs up, right, hoping people stop. I mean, there's no way to enforce it, I mean, you're not gonna take the house away from them, right? And, uh, but the design is, you would think that at some point, if they're waiting, they're trying to get out, that they're gonna figure it's easier to do this.
And, my second question is, if one in five remain, what happens to your project?
I'm sorry to say that.
If we leave one in five alone?
Well, you know, what I didn't mention about this design is, uh, it's a, it's a coving design, right? It's, it's, it's designed to front these collectors. If, um, in addition to the benefits of that is, and, you know, you can go back to the rectangle minimums, right? I mean, we probably get more lots per acre. This is what I found with this, you get almost, not quite, the same lots per acre, because you're able to front these roads, you're not doing these eyebrows. It uses thirty percent less asphalt, so it's good for the environment, there's a lot of green space, so, our, our, our hope is that we try to keep as much natural vegetation as possible on this track, on this property, where when we develop Shiloh, or when we develop any of these subdivisions, you go in there and you wipe everything out, clear out the vegetation, and then you start to rebuild, and then you come in with oak trees and, uh, cedar tree, whatever it is, right, and you replant everything, so, we hope, I mean, so, by using natural vegetation in some of the ride-ways, the idea is to, uh, is to hopefully, uh, save water as well. So, i- i- it's a big part of the design of this, and, and hence, that's why we were able to get it approved the last two times, and in fact, the last time, the P M Z director, Nathan Branton, insisted that we show him on there, so that, uh, everybody knew these roads were gonna be fronted.
Any questions from?
Real quick, if we eliminate one, five eliminates itself.
Basically, you're right.
Rowley?
It's probably better to eliminate both.
Yeah. Have you spoken to them, to them, and what, what do you think about?
We have, and, you know, we do know that this is, this is the first ters, or the second ters, I guess you'd say, but first ters with a private company to try to do something, they're trying to be creative, um, for the most part, uh, their designs work for us, I mean, we, they do. This was kind of the only thing that we wanted to bring here because of the curves, but, that being said, um, when we were reviewing this case, this street, this road that we're talking about was a collector, he showed you it was a collector. Somewhere, it changed to an, uh, art, arterial. We're not sure why, so, um, he had it as a collector, it's always been a collector, they front the lots, no problem, and then I come in, and I see it says arterial. And everybody's like, well, we don't remember why or how it got like that, you know, so, that's where some of the confusion came in. But, um, this is where, when there's, I guess, a disagreement, or, you know, um, the fact that I'm new, coming in, fairly new, and he's saying, look, I already went through two, through two, uh, directors, now I have to go again, and, and I get the frustration, I know he's frustrated, um, but we bring it here to you all so that we can get, we can get this cleared. You know, that way we can just move forward on this, now, do they have to, the, the construction side of this, they'll deal with that when it, when they go to one-stop shop, and they deal with the traffic department.
That's what I was gonna say.
All those people, so, they, they still have the design to worry about.
Okay.
They just want permission to front the road, and so, that, so, the concerns you might have, you know, by doing the driveways, putting that as a restriction, that it has to be put in there, helps, that it's gonna be a recorded document, and people must follow that. I think we can, we can work with it, um, but, it'd be really nice if, if we can straighten this out so that we can move forward and, and move beyond this, so he can get going with his, his project.
Uh, Mr. Navarro, yeah, thank you, um, is there a chance to amend the future thoroughfare plan that's coming up at council on Monday so that it no longer reads minor arterial and goes back to collector?
Yeah, that's a good question, so, um, what's going forward is already on the agenda, but what I'm proposing to do is, after we've done that, bring it back around and make that change to a collector. I don't want that to impact him today, because it's gonna take me a while to do that, there's a process to it, so, you know, I can do that, but I, I'm just concerned that it might take, it, it took us. us six months to work on the thoroughfare plan, and I'd hate to say, yeah, we're going to do it, and then six months later, he's still waiting for that, that change, but that, that is the plan.
And so Commissioner Portillo, to, to, to help clarify that, the long-range thoroughfare plan is literally just that, it's a plan. It shows you where these arterials and these collectors should end up. They don't have to end up exactly, because, you know what, there's no latitude and longitude. In our case, we had already had the master plan, and, you know, sometimes you wonder why, why wouldn't they have just continued it as a collector? Or was there something, you know, like, ah, que me los frago, verdad? I mean, you know, you're just kind of like, we had already built a section of it, and...
It's already there.
And, and there was already, I mean, there's going to be an arterial a little further east, right? It's so, it's my position that you can say, well, no, that should be a collector, the arterial's going to be further east, and in my opinion, doesn't have to go back to city council. I mean, they can go back and clean it up, but to me, that's a, that's a cleanup, it's not necessarily something that's set in stone. Because even the arterial, whether there's a huge creek there, I'm not going to put an arterial in the creek, I mean, so you move it back and forth, right?
Right.
I think you have leeway of half a mile one way or the other. And, and I'll give you another example. This thoroughfare plan shows Shiloh going over Loop Twenty, or going through Loop Twenty, as a major arterial, it turns into a minor arterial, and then it turns into a collector. I don't think that's what you all want, or I don't think the city wants that, me. The thing, I mean, it's a guide, it's not something set in stone, and that's a frustration I've really had with staff, is guys, this can be moved, and, and it's not even the right-of-way width, right? It's, I don't want to front an arterial, right? Even though Mr. Selman said you could, I'd rather not do that, I'd rather make sure that pro, that road gets from point A to point B, I want to front the collector.
Thank you. There any other questions from the commission? There's no further discussion, what are the wishes?
I would like to make a motion, I would like to motion to approve, and as well as amending the comments to remove planning comment one and five, and I think that's...
Please second that.
So we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? We have one, yes.
Thank you all so much.
Motion carries. Going on to item... Not going to consideration the following preliminary plaits and preliminary replats. Item section eight A, preliminary consideration of the eight and Gonzales plat, the intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Adrian Gonzalez, engineers Daniel Gomez. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one-lot development is M1. Location view, area view, street view, proposed plat, comments from planning, and the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Daniel Gomez, and we concur with the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Any questions from the commission?
Do you know what's going to be then? I didn't see.
Yes, the property owner wants to, to construct his restaurant business. Small taco place.
Thank you.
No other questions, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion, we have a second by Commissioner, we have a, all in favor? Against? Oh, Portilla, I'm sorry. It's Portilla, okay. Second by Commissioner Portilla. Against? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item eight D, preliminary, oh no, so we have a notice on... Eight B, we have an amendment for eight B to request a table time certain. Time, oh, time uncertain. Yes, time uncertain.
Motion to table item B, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're now moving on to consideration the following final plaits and final replats. Can I have a motion to hear items nine A, B, C, and D, if no one objects to that?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve items nine A through nine D?
Motion to approve nine A, nine D, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now, can you read them into record?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the items is nine A, final consideration of the replat of track one and sixty point forty-eight acres of track two, Las Blancas subdivision into lot one, block one, Gismo subdivision. Final consideration of the replat of lot fourteen, block eleven, Las Misiones subdivision, unit three, into lot fourteen A, block eleven, Las Misiones subdivision, unit three. The intent is to abandon a ten-foot drainage Eastman and dedicate a fifteen-foot utility Eastman and fifteen-foot drainage Eastman. Final consideration of the replat of Southern Development Industrial Park, unit one, and twenty point seventy-one acres of an unplanted tract into Southern Development, unit one, Midtown Commercial Plaza. The intent is commercial. Final consideration of the plat of lot one, block one, Manada Development subdivision, phase three, the intent is commercial.
Thank you. We also have items, item ten A, which is consideration of model subdivision compliance, consideration of model subdivision rule compliance of the replat of block eight, Oak Ridge subdivision into block eight, lots one through nine, and blocks nine, lots one through fourteen, Ironwood Estates, the intent is residential. Can I have a proposed motion, a motion for proposition?
There's just a correction that has to be made there. It says District five one, the pages, it says Marte Martinez.
Yeah.
Motion to approve, second.
So just, just to let you know what this is, this is a model rule, so there's a, there's a law that requires that we guarantee the residential development thirty years of water, right? So utilities director has to, has to approve that, and then it has to come here as a formality so that we agree on these developments, that we, we can service them for the next thirty years. And, and that's a, that's a federal law that was put in place in order to help with the Colonia situation. So that's why you're seeing this, it's model rules. So it goes through the whole process, they, they construct, they actually are done, the construction's done already, so they're coming in for the final just to, to cure. So you'll see this coming in, it all is a formality that we've, we've already agreed with them, utilities has cured it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion to approve.
Motion for that, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Before we adjourn, do you have any direction comments?
Not at this time, we just, just let you know, our one-stop-shop, we had Ms. Teresa Espalza that had been with around for twenty-five years maybe, and she just retired, and she used to, she worked in engineering, she would review those plans. Tomorrow, Humberto Serradel, who's with utilities, he'd been with the city for twenty-plus years also, he's retiring, so we're, we're, yeah, it's been a, been a while, some of the engineers have worked with them, some might jump up and down and cheer, but that's a whole different story, but we are, we are getting new staff coming in, so that's something that we're going to be on top of because they're new, they're coming in, and we're going to have to make sure that they learn the process, so, but we thank them for their service to the community, yes.
Wish them the best.
Thank you.
There's no other comments from the commission? Can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Against? Motion carries, we adjourn.